We go ahead and get started. Laura's not going to be here and Kevin's going to be a few minutes late, so we'll go ahead and get started. Welcome to our work session. We're happy to have Matthew Berger from Bricksmore here tonight in our work session. Bricksmore is the owner of Superior Marketplace and it's great to have an update with Matthew whenever he's available, so welcome.
Thanks for having me.
We'll quickly go around and I think you know many of us, but just for introductions, Clint Folsom, Mayor.
Mark Laces, Mayor of Laton.
Matt Magley, Commander.
Sandy Hanley, Trustee.
Neil Shaw, Trustee.
Ken Ellis, Trustee.
Great. Why don't you kick it off with any introductions that you like as far as what's going on?
Just a couple of quick updates, obviously, since I was here last. Stickly has opened, as you know. The school is on track with their opening. Party City, regrettably, did close. It was an underperforming store for them. They made the decision that just paying rent at this point was going to be less of a loss than operating the store. They do still have a lease in control of the space for the time being. I don't remember the date. We do have an agreement with them. We are marketing that space. We do have an agreement with them. We tied some things with them across the country. We will get actual possession of that space back a little earlier than the lease would have otherwise allowed, but in the meantime, we are working with them, marketing that space. We do have a couple of things that we are working on early in the stages right now for the old Sears Home Store, the appliance store. Just in discussion, or I think there's one deal in the letter of intent stage at this point. And then in terms of outside of the retail, we've talked to two, now three. Matt made an introduction today to a third group that we've been talking to in one capacity or another, whether that's a selling a piece to a fee owner or a joint venture. We're still, we haven't really worked that through on our own, but for a residential component within the project, whether that's, that would not be for sale housing, that would be rental units, whether that's market rental units, or the meeting Matt and I just had earlier was for affordable housing units. So, we are looking at those options, which is, I know we talked about that at the last meeting. We have gotten, as a company, we still today only have retail in our portfolio. We don't have any multifamily, but we are getting closer. We've got a number of projects that are moving down that pipeline in entitlement process or different aspects of it that we are moving closer. We'll be entitled probably by the end of the year for a student housing project in Northern California. We will be, we've got entitlements we're working on in Plano, Texas, a multifamily project in Orlando, just outside Philadelphia, another one. And I'm drawing a blank, but I know there's two or three others that are in that entitlement process at this point. All of those, with the exception of one, are, they are going to be, we will maintain fee ownership and just different structures of a joint venture. We're not going to be, we are not going to transition into apartment operators as a company. Not our business, not what we want to do. We don't want to hire that personnel. So, that's why it's important to us that we kind of approach it slowly and find the right operator that knows what they're doing and knows the market and understands the As far as the site is concerned, we don't know. We've looked at a couple of different options. Obviously, I know you guys spent the money on the ULI survey or study. You know, there's obviously the pad next to Panda that can support housing, maybe with or without, something with the RTV. There's the center, the town, the market center, if you want to call it, with all the shops on the left and right as a pull-in, a drive aisle between Costco and Target, that I think could be reoriented and something could potentially happen there. And then I think there's a potential where Petsmart and all the Smacks are on that parcel to do something as well and relocate or reorient those tenants somehow. None of those options are off the table. It just, you know, depends whatever, whatever the partner we bring in, we'll defer to them to a certain extent where they think they can maximize that particular use. That's kind of where we are, in the very beginning stages. But there are groups we have talked to. All of, and the groups we've talked to all have experience in the greater Denver marketplace. So, nobody that would be new to the market.
What are going to be your deciding factors, who to choose there, and timing?
You know, who to choose is, I don't know the answer to that, really. Actually, I don't know the answer to either. I mean, timing, I think if we found a partner today, we're ready to move forward with something. Now, there's no reason, nothing really in our way to wait. Who to choose becomes a little more complicated because that will have to go to our executive team, which we do meet on a weekly basis. That's not the issue. It's just going to, sometimes those decisions get a little bit more complicated with how do we want to structure it like this, because it's not what we do every day. Every week I go to, we go to our investment executive committee with deals for retenanting boxes or redeveloping a shopping center. We have those meetings every week, but bringing in a use that we don't do every day becomes a longer discussion and becomes a more involved package that gets presented. The one in Northern California I referenced, which I oversee, you know, I've got a rough draft of a financial analysis for that one and it's 58 pages long. That doesn't even have any of the fluff yet, that's just the numbers with no renderings of what it looks like or anything else, and it just becomes a very detailed and involved package. And we haven't even selected a partner for that one yet. We're just going to, at this point, we're moving forward without a partner because that's one we want, we know we want to own. So, we're prepared to start building it if we have to. Without that partner, we've got a number of partners that have expressed interest. You know, it's a little different animal with student housing. There's only so many groups around the country that you probably want every business with. Traditional multifamily, obviously, there's thousands of groups that you could partner with. But it's somebody that, we're going to make sure that's somebody that is financially stable for the long haul. We'll do a very deep dive into their balance sheet and their financials and understand how they're financing the project, or if we finance the project for them, right? You know, our contribution could be the land and we're not opposed to being somebody's bank. We've done it on the retail front. I'm doing it now in a deal in Dallas where at the movie theater, we're essentially acting as their bank to build a 75,000 square foot movie theater. If the return is right, then it's something we would look at.
Would you say company-wide, you're leaning more towards something where you retain some ownership piece versus selling off?
I don't know the answer. So, I think, as I was in the meeting Matt and I were just in, I think if this were like our project in Davis, California, or if we were in Boulder across the street from the campus, no question, we're owning it. We're not selling it, we're not doing anything. I think as you get a little outside of that sort of project like this, I think we would give, if the numbers were right and the operator was right, we'd give a hard thought to selling the land. I think ultimately, if we could participate somehow and at least the land becomes our equity contribution, we would give a hard thought to that for the right operator. But again, we don't want to operate it. Yeah, we definitely do not want to do that. So, finding the right partner is going to be really key to us. Somebody, so for this project, it's going to be, it's got to be somebody who, quite honestly, I don't even know if it was a, somebody that came to me and said, look, we've got a lot of experience doing this in Denver, great, but I'd like to have somebody who at least knows the 36 corridor. I think that's important. I think it does become a little bit of a different animal. And I think over and above that, what's going to be really important is their financials and their balance sheet.
So, would you say that you're, you know, right now, you're actively looking into that partnership potential, or is it more of a kind of wait and see in terms of what the economy is doing right now?
We are. No, we're actively looking. We're not, like, everybody's talking about the economy and the recession on the horizon, but for us, if you look at it and you look at our key partners in the retail world, you know, all of whom have just reported phenomenal financial results, you know, Target, Walmart, and you go on and on with our partners that are reporting very strong earnings. You know, for us, it's more, we are actively looking, but it also becomes an allocation of resources. And so, if, if, we're not going to put as much focus, and we haven't read the numbers yet on this, just, we haven't, but if I'm looking at projects where investing 20, 30 million at, you know, a 12% return versus something where maybe I'm just contributing a land at a, you know, a 6% return, you know, we're going to focus more, obviously, where that return is. But I can tell you, my redevelopment group is actively looking. We're also actively looking, we're doing our first joint venture with Marriott on a hotel deal in Orlando, at a pretty unique asset we have there. So, we also are talking to some hotel operators as well for this site. I don't know if that'll pan out or not, but there's been some discussions.
It's one of the things that I'm sure it's already on your radar, you should be keeping, I think, top of mind, is the Storage Tech property, the Conoco Phillips property right now is under contract. It is, you know, the governor's office is involved and what they have, I guess, disclosed publicly so far is it's some major employer, 2,500 jobs, something like that, is that right? They haven't announced who it is yet. It's, you know, a package deal that's going to have some senior living space as well, so not enough residential to, you know, support all the jobs that are going to be brought in there. But, you know, in terms of, you know, timing and opportunity to do something, you know, with your property in line with that project, you know, could be really synergistic. Because, I mean, if it's just a question of hopping on the bus, you know, one bus ride over there.
Do you know when that's happening?
So, I think this month is when they're supposed to disclose.
Announce it. The employer.
The employer. Now, it's still contingent upon getting approval in city council in Lewisville.
Okay.
And that question may or may not happen before the election.
Yep.
So, it may be a.
Probably won't.
Probably won't, so, but if it's, if it's, you know, coming down the pike, it's, this is going to be a first quarter 2020 issue.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's going to be a major transformative project.
Yep.
And, I mean, talk about injecting a lot of cash and energy into just the 36 corridor.
Yep.
That's going to be it.
Did you have awareness of that before?
I didn't.
No.
We had sent, Matt, the info on mall redevelopment.
Yeah, that I've, yeah, that I've known. And everything that's happening over there with the changes to the additions that they're going to be making with multifamily over there. Yeah. That we've been paying close attention to. Obviously, we brought Stickly out of that project, so, but yeah, we're aware of that and everything happening there in Brookville.
Okay. So, you mentioned earlier about an allocation of resources and finding the right path and courting partners. I think from our side, you obviously know that this is an important area for us. You mentioned the ULI study that we've done. We also had the Marion Associates pull together some work through our Northwest sub-plan. So, we've done a lot of work, but clearly, it's the ball's in your court. We can't force anything. So, I guess my, my question is, I have no interest, gratitude, can you spend money that doesn't help?
Right.
And we have Adam, who's certainly worked to help bring in tenants. Where does this relationship stand right now for where we can help each other and get really?
I would tell you at this point, I would say honestly, there's no need for you guys to spend money. We are perfectly comfortable spending tens of thousands of dollars or more on the right studies and the right due diligence to do what we need to do. That, spending that kind of money does not need to get any approval from my executive team. I can, I can spend that money without, without any approvals. There's no need for, I think we have enough data already and we've gotten some stuff on our own independently, at no cost, just from some of the relationships we've had that support the need for the multifamily. So, at this point, I think we have everything we need. It's just, I've got to get focused on it and I've got to get my team focused on it and I've got to find the right partner. I don't know if any of the three groups that we're talking to are the right group or not. We haven't dug in depth with any of them. My next step is to look at the three areas within the shopping center that I think makes sense, engage the right architectural firm to spend some money and see how it lays out, quite honestly. And I'm fully prepared to do that. And that doesn't cost me significant dollars. I mean, I could probably do that for $30,000 to $50,000.
So, I think that actually leads in with my next question. You mentioned the three spots within the development. So, it sounds like we're more interested in kind of incremental change along the way rather than some type of wholesale change in the project.
No, I think, I think if I did, if this moves forward, I think it becomes, I really, truthfully, the way the, the road layout is within the shopping center, I don't really think is conducive to doing something like this. So, it would be, for me, it would be, it would be a larger wholesale change with the project. I would probably, I would probably look at this as a two or three-phase redevelopment. The first phase would be the addition of multifamily and in conjunction with that phase, I would look at a road realignment. The second phase would probably be reorienting some of the retail once that's done. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't come in and just say, hey, here's a piece of land, let's do some multifamily and, you know, we're done. Walk away.
So, once we actually get the ball moving, we're talking a five, 10-year project?
Five years.
Five years.
Yeah.
What's the size of some of the multifamily that you're thinking about in your past projects or from any comparable?
It varies.
I understand, from a whole square footage. People at home watching saying, holy crud, there's more, here we go, more, more housing, more multifamily.
Yeah, so, it's really, for us, it's really what the market can support and we would get independent studies to tell us that. I don't know the answer to that for Superior. So, and, and the project that I'm really working on extensively right now in Davis, we're doing, we've got a shopping center directly across the street from campus. We're knocking the entire shopping center down.
But that's student housing. I think you discussed that.
Understood. And we're going six stories high over retail. My project that I'm working on in Plano, Texas, is 300 units wrap around structured parking. I've got a project in San Diego that I'm probably three years off on, that's going to be, again, 350 to 380 units in that ballpark, four stories, wraparound parking. Some of the ones on the East Coast are working, I don't know, because I'm not as actively involved in those. I can tell you, those are the ones that I'm doing out in the West Coast. So, in that 300-unit range, give or take, I don't know that Superior can support 300 units. Maybe it can. In my, in my head, I feel like it's about 150 in a project.
So, we currently have a ban against marijuana dispensaries here in Superior that was enacted by the previous board back in 2013. And we haven't had discussions about this, but.
I can answer, I can answer that question very, really easily.
If the, if the board revisited, would Bricksmore rent to tenants?
Today, no. But it has, today, we would not. As a company, we don't do that anywhere in the country, but maybe not for the reasons you think. The only reason we don't is because of the federal laws, it makes that shopping center non-financial. So, if we were going to ultimately sell that project, whether it's today or 10 years from now, that, we just changed our buyer pool because now we have to find a cash buyer. We can't finance it with that type of tenant in there. So, if, if that changed, we don't necessarily have an objection to it with the right tenant. For instance, unless you've been in California or the Pacific Northwest, you may not know. There's a tenant called Bevmo, Beverages &amp; More. And it's, so Bevmo is a 10,000 to 15,000 square foot liquor store. They've got 200 locations, really good operator. We just, I was just with their CEO two months ago and he basically said to me, look, he said, we have a 30-year history of selling controlled substances and in 30 years, selling, however, hundreds of millions of dollars, we've gotten in trouble three times for selling to someone underage. So, we have a pretty good track record and we're thinking about doing this now in California in a separate section of the store, it's a separate entrance, separate, and basically, how do you feel about that? And again, that's a good operator. It's somebody that would do a very good job doing that, but if he does it, I can't let him do that in my center because I can't sell it then. And, you know, as a publicly traded company, we always are looking at a 10-year cycle and, you know, not that, not that everything in our portfolio today is going to be sold within the next 10 years, but we're always looking at what, you know, recycling our capital. And so, we always have to think about what that looks like and if we can't sell it, we can't lease it.
Yeah, and also, I mean, you've got publicly traded tenants as well.
We do, which is, which is.
They may have objections to it.
It's a lesser of an issue, but all, most of the tenants, most of those large anchor tenants will have a noxious use provision in the lease that will prevent, I mean, obviously, it's standard language, they prevent, you know, any type of pornography in the shopping center, not as standard, but they will prevent marijuana. I mean, heck, a lot of tenants even consider now salons a noxious use because of the odor. So, they have to be a certain distance from their front door. But, yeah, that is a provision in a lot of the national anchor leases that would prevent me, but I think we could overcome that pretty easily, but we can't overcome the financing.
Sure. Matt, excuse me, I want to thank you for coming in. It's really helpful and I think for this town, it is the economic core for us. I know you answered some questions for Ken in terms of redevelopment cycle. If we go down that path, it's at least a five-year cycle. So, in the interim, like, what are some of the things that the town can do for you? Or, you know, one of the things, I went through the financials and everything with the company and I know there's a bigger focus on the community, working within the community and, you know, working together. So, what are the things that we can do for you to, you know, because, you know, our residents look at the empty storefronts, I think, you know, you as a town should be doing more. You know, Party City had a 10-year lease and they banned it because it made economic sense. They see that as, you know, what are you doing here? And I get it, you've got to market it and all that, it takes time, but what are some of the other things?
So, for us, the struggle has always been at this property has been, the people, there haven't been, the population hasn't been there.
Right.
And so, that's not something you guys can fix overnight. I know it's happening, right? You're building 1,800 homes across the street. If we're talking about adding, adding residents here, all of that helps, but that's been the problem. And there's, quite honestly, there hasn't been another problem. That's been it.
Density.
Yeah. Really, that's been it. For us, truthfully, you know, and this changes every year, you know, and every, every month with what we're doing and what our strategy is, but as a company today, because of the lack of density, even though it's coming a little bit, Bricksmore probably wouldn't be a buyer for the shopping center today. You know, we'd rather buy in Denver or in somewhere else. But we own it today and I think that, I think it makes sense for us to reinvest in it. But, yeah, it's, it's the density, that's been the issue.
So, I want to play that out a little bit more because one of the things we're trying to do within this community is get people to shop locally a little bit more. So, this past summer, our cultural arts organization tried to do Superior Spectacular, you know, within the parking lot. And I think what they. And I think what they struggled with is just who to communicate with at Bricksmore.
Yeah, so.
They want, they had aspirations for.
And what was that, what, what was that event? Like who were the vendors there?
Gosh, I think it was.
Was it food or was it art or was it kind of?
It was mainly art.
Mainly art.
Yeah, I think they're, I think they wanted to have some food trucks, but they struggled with that piece of it.
Yeah.
This was the first time we'd ever done it, so we don't, you know, how it's going to iterate over time.
I am a tremendous fan of things like that. Would love to see them in the community. Our, our goal ultimately as a company, and it's, it's hard to say this when, you know, we're based in New York City, we own four hundred and fifty shopping centers around the country, but we want each and every one of our centers be, to be the center of the community that they serve. And for me, personally, that's a phenomenal way to do that and have an ongoing event like that. Sometimes, keeping in mind that of the, of all those centers that we own, a vast majority of them are grocery anchored, it becomes very difficult because the grocers don't like having food tenants selling food in their parking lot. And a lot of times that's restricted. From a common area, it becomes very restrictive in a lot of the leases where we can do it. That doesn't mean I won't, if, if it, if there, you, if there's an operator and there are people that operate those types of events and they bring in vendors, sometimes it's the municipalities, sometimes it's, there's people that do that, companies that do that. If there's somebody or a way that there's a commitment to doing something, not necessarily as a one-off, but if it's an ongoing event, I'm all for it, we can figure out how to make it work.
Okay.
For a one-off event, it becomes very difficult because it's a lot of brain damage for me to go to Whole Foods and Target and Costco and say, can we do this? And it takes them ninety days to say yes and what the restrictions they put on it, and it's very difficult to do that for a Saturday.
No, and that, that actually makes tremendous amount of sense.
Yes.
Because I think our goal was, this was the first year.
Yeah.
Start now, small, and continue to build it out. I think aspirationally, we tried to target three days for the summer.
Yeah.
You know, having never done it, I think that creates a lot of tension for you guys.
Yeah, so what I would say is we, we actually, so our West Coast office is based with where I am in San Diego, but we actually have an onsite or a Colorado property manager, Shelley Kimball. Shelley actually offices in our center in Westminster.
Okay.
In fact, it's funny, I was here the other day, my son just started at Boulder and I was at Target shopping for him. And as I was walking from Target down and just walking, I walked into her on the sidewalk. So she's here all the time.
Moving, we can see you.
Yeah, yeah. But yeah, Shelley would be, so just reach out to me and I can coordinate that with Shelley.
Really appreciate it.
Yeah, but I would love to have events like that.
I think, and I, you know, I think it speaks a lot to at least what Bricksmore is trying to do in terms of trying to be with, you know, be part of the community. And I think our community would love to be, you know, buy more and participate more. And I think this could help us out there.
And even if some of the tenants or non-tenants, in the case of Target and Costco, kind of put up a fight, we can probably figure out a way around it.
Sure.
We're good at that. And we, sometimes we're really good at just doing it and begging for forgiveness later. So.
My son tries that, it doesn't get.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But no, I, for me, food trucks, art shows, fairs like that, I love them. And I would, I would do more of them if I could. Yeah, but definitely if, if you guys want to have that kind of thing as a regular, ongoing event, we'd love to host it and figure out how to do that.
We have to cut it short because of the crazy lightning storm this year, but yeah, I think optimistically it shouldn't happen again.
Yeah. Other questions?
I guess my, my, my only comment is, in addition to that project in Lewisville.
Yeah.
You're just looking at kind of the macro trends here in Boulder County. I mean, you can build residential fast enough.
I agree.
In Boulder County.
Yep.
You know, whether it's affordable housing or just, you know, regular housing, there are a lot of people that are commuting up and down thirty-sixth, either to Boulder, either to Bloomfield, all the way down to Denver. And it's, this is a prime piece of real estate that is ripe for.
Yeah.
Reinvestment and redevelopment. And I think that if, if you're looking to drive more traffic to those stores, the easiest way to do that is to make people live there.
I completely agree.
It seems like that's, that's the, the game changer in this project. The economic trends are going to be what the economic trends are, but people are still moving to Boulder.
Yeah.
They're moving to Colorado.
Yeah, and that's not going to change.
Those places to live.
Yeah, it's not going to change.
And they're going to value the convenience of the location.
Yep.
If I could add one thing, and it could be something you're also aware of, because Lewisville is also looking at redeveloping what used to be the Sands Club, you know, the other side of the highway. I don't know if you've been aware of that, but.
Oh, we are, yeah.
Okay, because with the Kohl's abandoning ship, they're looking at residential redevelopment as well.
Okay. Do we know how the Element is doing since they opened occupancy wise? Are they on track with where they want it to be or any idea?
I think it's only been open for two months.
Yeah, it hasn't been long.
I know.
Looking at the parking lot.
Yeah.
Looks like they're, yeah, we just figured out, it looks like they're.
And we'll start to get that information over the next couple of months.
Okay.
At least revenue comes in.
Yeah.
Maybe they're tracking that.
Okay.
It's welcome, better idea.
Perfect.
Signage, always.
So signage would be, so we would probably, as part of that same phase one that I mentioned, we would probably redo the signage as part of that. Yeah, as part of that. The, the, the tax laws get really funny with signage, so if I can lump it into a redevelopment, it becomes easier. There's a, there's been an ongoing debate within the company of whether that's a, I can capitalize that or not through GAAP accounting or not. And I try not to be an accountant, so, yeah. Signage is difficult. Adding, redoing signage, I know I cannot capitalize that, it becomes a tax issue. If I tear it all down and do all new signage, I can't. So then it just becomes a, I need a method to pay for that, which would be the redevelopment.
What about, and we talked about this the last time you were here, but, you know, although, I understand that Target and Costco, they own the parking lots, that their customers use, but then kind of to the, I guess it's to the southeast of whatever the, the cross street is.
Second Moore.
Second Moore?
Yeah.
Definitely some, some real estate there that can be cannibalized, probably not necessary for local existing.
Probably, yeah, I don't, probably not necessary, but, you know, that's part of where my thought is as far as a redevelopment from a multifamily, if I were kind of looking at that piece where Office Max and PetSmart, right, if we could believe that, kind of change some of those drive aisles a little bit. Target would work with us. These, a lot of, and I, I don't know about Costco, because we don't have a great relationship, not, not that we have a bad relationship, we just don't have a relationship with them. They're typically owners, so for us as a landlord, we don't deal with Costco very often. Target, we have a very good relationship with, and it's, it's interesting, over the last couple of years, companies like Target, Kohl's, even Walmart to an extent, where they'd gone into these municipalities historically have required just this massive parking field, they're realizing that they don't need it. And they're also realizing they don't really want to be landlords and they don't want to be developers. So, you know, we just, we just are working with Kohl's right now on our deal down at Parker in Arapahoe, where they control the parking field. And we've got, we got an unsolicited offer from a bank that wanted to build a new pad building out there. Well, it's not our land, it's Kohl's, and Kohl's doesn't want to develop a bank. And so we worked out a deal with Kohl's where we're kind of annexing that parcel. We'll spend the money to do it and kind of make that piece part of our parcel and worked out some things with them. For the retailers, they're seeing that it's bringing them more traffic to free up some of that parking actually. And so there's some things, I wouldn't say it's off the table to not do anything on those parking fields. I don't know about Costco, because again, we just don't deal with them every day. But Target, we could probably do some stuff and, and blend that into a redevelopment if it makes sense with our, with whatever we come up with.
Well, Costco on a Saturday or Sunday, they park up.
Yeah.
It's, it's full. And Target, they could probably lose some of the space because it's just not as, as much traffic, regional traffic.
Yeah, Kohl's was interesting. Kohl's came to us and basically said, here's our entire portfolio with Bricksmore, we'd like to see something here, 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 we don't want to do it there. And, and we've had similar conversations with Target since then. Doing something with Target now, hoping to do something with Target now, we're debating on how the building lays out, but in, in LA, we're trying to do something with Target on a piece that they have to deliver.
So I know that Costco has solar panels on the roof. Does Target?
I think, I think Target does. So solar for us, we are just starting our, I shouldn't say just starting, we're about two years into our solar program. We started it in California to kind of see how it worked. And it's worked very well. It's now, I just signed off on it, basically expanding to the rest of our California properties. So it's going to start, start moving across the country with our solar program. So that's coming, we, we will be doing that shortly. In the next three years, I'd say, you'll see solar on our stuff.
I imagine it's going to pay for itself a little quickly out here.
So for us, we don't, we've partnered with a company called Blue Sky, they're out of Napa, actually. And we actually don't have any equity participation in the solar program itself, but we get brand new roofs on our shopping center. They put new roofs on it for us, which saves us a ton of money. We get a regular warranty on the roof. And we work with Blue Sky then to go sign up the tenants, but we don't have any equity per se in the solar itself. At least as of now, that's how we're doing that program. But the new roofs, I mean, that saves us a lot of money. Six and seven figures depending on the shopping center.
And how do you guys feel about EV stations?
Good. Depending on the placement, we have them in a lot of our centers. We have, God, blank, who's the name of the company? EV Go? EV Go, I think is the name of the company.
Yeah, EV Go here.
Yeah. We just, we just signed our first deal with Tesla. They've been really difficult to work with, but we finally got one signed back in the East Coast, so we'll start rolling more of those out now that we have a conforming document. But, but yeah, we're all in favor of EV stations. So the problem I have with them is, is transformers are typically big, they're, they can obstruct sightlines for traffic. So it's, it's where we can, which we didn't really know going into it at first, and it does, you learn, right? Unfortunately, the hard way sometimes. And so now I am extra careful about where, you know, I get, I typically, when it comes to me for approval, I say, okay, we're taking these parking spaces, here's the transformer. Now I know what this transformer looks like and how intrusive it can be. So we're being more mindful of, of the transformer, that's the problem that we've had.
So if you're building from the ground up, knowing now what the transformer looks like, you don't have a problem because you plant around it?
Correct, yeah. Or if I can get them to move it to the right place, which just means sometime an extra long run for the power, but usually we can figure something out.
Have you worked with municipalities who have required EV stations as part of a development or redevelopment?
Not yet. I've worked with.
Do you have a point of opinion around?
No, I, I don't have a problem with them. I think it's great, Adam. So I mean, if a municipality required it, I wouldn't have a problem with that. Now, I, I would want to at least make sure it's a partnership about where it goes and what it looks like, but as far as actually installing them, I would have no problem with that. Yeah. Some of our tenants require them.
To push that a little further, you know, because depending on, you know, like Boulder Valley, Boulder, it's like two percent of parking spaces. We're potentially looking at ten percent of parking spaces, which then puts it over the eighty-eight of them. So the question becomes, you know, at what point is it too many of them? When they're not, like right now, we're not getting used.
I, I don't know the answer to that. It's funny, and I always, I do pay attention to them when I go visit our centers because I try to see how much they do get used. And they're constantly full at most of my California centers, every time I'm there. And I, sometimes I see cars even waiting to get in there. But I don't see that, when I'm at my Texas properties, I don't see that very often. At some of my Colorado properties, I don't see that very often.
Until Ford releases the electric F-150.
Yeah, yeah, it's, I mean, I think it's coming. Yeah, it's coming. I think ten percent's probably high. But yeah, I have no issue putting them in at all.
How's your relationship with In-N-Out?
As good as any other landlord, which is definitely great. So In-N-Out is, they are a tenant of ours in a couple of sites. So In-N-Out, we have actually talked to them about this site. And typical for In-N-Out, even though we have as good a relationship as you can have, they never responded. They'll take the meeting, they'll, you know, we'll get back to you and they never get back to you. When they enter a market, as they are Colorado, I can tell you their buyers, they're not tenants. They will typically buy, I don't know that there's a rule of thumb, but when they entered Houston, for instance, I think they bought the first thirty sites they did before they started even considering ground lease. And not that we wouldn't sell a pad to In-N-Out, but they're going to go out and look for spaces not from landlords like us, they're going to look, that they may be able to buy from, they're going to look for something that they know they can buy. They're just tough to deal with. They're really tough to deal with. And their head of lease administration is, you know, best friends with my VP of Property Management, we still can't get stuff out of them. They're just, they're really difficult. Everything is very close to the vest with those kinds of. Yeah, really tough.
Changing the, the direction a little bit, and I think Neil alluded to it, we get a lot of questions from our residents about, about the marketplace overall.
Yeah.
And its, and its success. There's an optics issue.
Yeah.
And a lot of times I hear that it comes down to just the economics of it and not necessarily a willingness to meet the economic demand of the area. So for example, we've got Buffalo Wilders, who is in their location, and I think they moved out two years ago now, a year and a half, something in that region. And from all appearances, looked like they were doing quite well to the community. Always full, running a good business.
Right.
And people here, it's because rent goes up and they can wander.
But keep in mind, we didn't own that building.
Okay.
Yeah, we don't own that building.
Gotcha.
They own that.
So what I'm looking for is, is the answer you can give me, to me, that I can give to our residents of, no, this isn't necessarily the case, and Buffalo is just a mere example. We have dozens of empty storefronts.
Yeah, and again, I think it, it really boils down to, so if I go back to Ross, for instance, I will tell you, this was the worst store from sales in the entire Ross chain. Now, I think there's two factors to that. I think factor one, it was the wrong demographic for Ross in terms of an income level. This isn't a Ross customer. If you, if you, if you asked Ross to outline who their customer is, this doesn't meet that criteria. They never should have been a store here.
Right.
You know, I think that was probably, I think that was really the biggest factor, was this was just not their customer. The second factor was that the people who were here, who weren't their customer already, there weren't even enough of them. So I still think, I think really, quite honestly, it just boils down to population more than anything. Like I think we're pretty realistic about our economics as far as what we're doing, where we are in our rents. You know, we obviously set our budgets, I'm in the middle of it now, for, you know, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And while we don't like to miss what those budgets are, and, and we also don't like to take those budgets and go backwards from rent that we were getting, we're realistic about it. We also don't like to have a vacant space.
Right.
Right? So we will, if there's a deal to be made, we'll try to figure out how to make that So I, I don't think we're getting in the way of deals. I think, so one thing we have now that, that helps me a lot from a management standpoint is we, for the past year and a half, two years, we've, before my leasing guys, my, my leasing team, you know, they were keeping leads and prospects on a yellow pad or maybe in an Excel spreadsheet. I'd have to, you know, I was pulling teeth sometime to say, who are you working with at Superior or Westminster, what's going on? We have Salesforce now that everything has to go into Salesforce. So I can see, as soon as they, they get a phone call, it goes into Salesforce. And I can see what's happening. And I can tell you of our Colorado properties, um, the one that gets the most interest was actually our, the one that we bought this year down in Inglewood. We bought a King Supers anchored center. There's not a, the phone doesn't ring a lot off of Superior. And, and we do have, although we lease it out of San Diego, that's where my leasing person is based. We also have local partnership here with Legend, uh, who I think does a phenomenal job for us. And they're actively out here all the time canvassing and knocking on doors. And, um, so it's, it's not for lack of effort, but yeah, I think it's, it's still, it just boils down to people.
So if I could just repeat what she said, make sure I'm hearing you right?
Yeah.
The issue is if the people come to you and you're saying, here's what the bar is for rent?
Yep.
And they walk away, you're not getting the people who support the inlet.
Correct. And then the ones that are there, I mean, people see, you know, uh, I'm drawing a blank, I'm drawing a blank on the name, but the Music Academy that's over by Target. Look, we've been renewing her on a short-term lease, year after year, because she's, you know, if she's making a profit, it's, it's like that thin, right? Because she just, there aren't the people to support the school.
Right.
And she's not, she's not calling us saying, you guys need to lower my rent. She's calling us and saying, I just can't find the people.
Right. Okay. Appreciate that.
And do you feel about like ninja gyms and things like that? You see something like that working? Have you had great play?
Yeah, I mean, I think for the right operator, it's fine. Sometimes they can be pretty capital intensive. So you've got to make sure somebody's got the cash behind it to support it and make sure it gets operational and can cash flow. They're expensive to build out sometimes. You know, we were very careful with the swim school, right? Because again, it's a pretty specialized use. You've got a tenant that's altering my building, they're digging up a slab to build a pool, right? And so that becomes expensive for me to fix if I've got to backfill that space with somebody. All those ancillary type uses, I'm in favor of if it's the right operator.
Have you had any discussions with anybody in Colorado?
We have, there's a group that's actually out of France, believe it or not, that is, uh, they've got four or 500 locations in France that they're coming to the US. They started in, on the West Coast. We don't have any open yet, but we've also already signed four leases with them. And they are looking at our center in Westminster right now as another location. But yeah, I mean, we presented all of our, our entire portfolio to them. Well capitalized. We've actually met and talked to their, their equity partners and their debt partners. So we understand what's behind it, which we're a little extra careful because it's a French company. But yeah, we, we are talking in groups like that. But no, I, I think, um, again, back to being the center of the community, right? Any type of use that's serving what those customers, the residents want. And, and we used to look at our business in terms of daily trips. And so, um, it's easy for me to understand how many people are coming to a shopping center every day based on the sales of a grocer. But I'm trying to, we're trying to figure out the daily trips and those ancillary type uses in there. I was just at a conference, I shouldn't say just, earlier this year, it was in February, there's Entertainment Experience Evolution, is the name of the concert, our conference. And it was in Beverly Hills this year, I think it's downtown LA next year. And it was all uses like that and different types of uses, that non-traditional types of retail uses. And it was interesting listening to the panels and the amount of people that are visiting some of those uses. Some of the statistics, it was really mind blowing with some of them, actually. So again, that's just adding to being the center of the community, right? People keep coming and they want to visit those things.
You anticipate you guys are gonna hold on to this marketplace for the long term, or are you gonna look to sell?
No, um, I think if, if I had walked in, if, if you guys were like, look, you guys just need to make this retail work, and we don't want to see multifamily, we don't want to see anything change, we just like the way it is, we'd probably be sellers. Honestly. Having, um, support to invest in a redevelopment that I, I quite honestly think could make a lot of sense. Yeah, we're not, I don't, today we're not sellers. Now, if somebody gave us an offer we couldn't say no to, we'd probably consider it, but we're not, this is not on my, so I go through every, every quarter, quite honestly, I go through with my chief investment officer. And we look at every property I have in my portfolio and where that fits on our pipeline. And we're looking out typically on that, on that report, we're looking out five years for acquisitions, dispositions, what we're targeting to buy or sell. This, this doesn't come up on that. This is on our re-deb pipeline right now. So, yeah, not something we're looking at selling. We have, um, seven assets now in the greater Denver area. We'd like to be at 10 to 12. I don't, there are probably, um, probably two, maybe three we would sell out of this portfolio. But we'd like to take that capital, if we do sell them and reinvest it then, right? We felt again, we want to get to 10 to 12 in this marketplace. Okay. Yeah, this isn't one of the three that I'm thinking of selling.
From a percentage standpoint, what, do you know the percentage of occupancy at the, at the center right now?
Off the top of my head, I don't. I should, but I don't, off the top of my head.
I think that's been one of the, one of the challenges of the center is, you know, the smaller spaces look, I mean, you look at a couple of them, it looks like a significant portion is, is vacant. But then, you know, I, I've heard over the years that the, the occupancy percentage is, is higher than maybe some others in the country. And thus, you know, thus it's actually performing better than it may look.
No, but again, keep in mind, we're gonna look at that, um, we're gonna look at that differently than, than a consumer driving through the shopping center would look at it, right? Because you're gonna look at Party City as vacant.
Right.
We're not, right? Right? And so, um, there's two different ways to look at it. Let's see here, I have it.
I mean, even the Wild Wings building is, is not yours, but it's, it is leased, you know, somebody's paying.
It is.
They're, they're paying them.
It is, sorry, let me get to the right sheet. Yeah, I don't know off the top of my head. And again, I should know, but I don't. Yeah, I can let you know what it is.
Okay.
So jumping back to, uh, where this, uh, center is within your pipeline and within your redevelopment pipeline. At some point, I assume, once you do have the right partner, you'll actually have to have the discussion about financing, about redevelopment.
So that wouldn't be a discussion for us. We finance all our redevelopment cash. We, we, uh, we have zero property level debt across the entire company. All of our debt is corporate debt or bonds. We don't have anything, there's not one property that's encumbered with a loan of any of our properties. We wouldn't put financing on any of our properties. So we're financing, so we, we're doing $200 million a year in redevelopment across the country. An actual, when I say that, that's actual spend. That's not our pipeline. Our pipeline's probably about a billion. Our actual spend is 200 million a year, and that's all financed with free cash flow or financed out of some dispositions we've been making.
Okay.
So for us, there's no financing requirement.
So we talked about having to reorient buildings and roads, infrastructure from a commitment from the town level. What, if anything, you're looking for?
If there's, if, if there is participation, it obviously helps because we are looking for, you know, keep in mind, any redevelopment I do and I bring into my investment committee, my executive team, there is a $200 million pool of money, right? And so I'm competing with maybe somebody at my counterpart from the north that's bringing in a redevelopment. If his is coming in at a, at an eight and a half percent return, and I'm coming in at a six and a half percent return, who's gonna get the money, right? And it's, it's not, it's not that cut and dry. I mean, we don't necessarily look at it like that. But I have brought in deals of the six and a half that have gotten approved, and I've brought in deals of the six and a half that haven't gotten approved. And so, um, we're publicly traded, so we have a duty, right, to reach those returns. And so for me, my cost of capital, even if I look at the dividend we pay and where we are, my cost of capital is probably an eight. So, um, the fact that I've gotten deals approved at a six and a half goes to show that we are trying to do the right thing for centers that we own. Because that's below my cost of capital. So we are pushing, trying to get anything up to that right return. So any, any partnership or any help we can get from a municipality helps.
So I suppose, let's get down the road, you have a partner for housing, you draw the numbers, and you get to the point that you're trying to make work, that's when you come to us and have your discussion.
Yep. And we have no problem being completely open book.
But as of right now, it's not something you're assuming or working into your equations?
Correct. Yeah.
How are Ethan Allen and Stickley doing?
Stickley's pretty new, so I don't know yet. I, I think they, and they are required to report sales, but I, I think it's only annually. So you, you'll probably know when we know, just based on their, their tax reports. Ethan Allen, we don't own, so I don't know. We had sold that piece of land to them years and years ago that they never built on until just now. Probably 10 years ago, I think we sold that to them.
You know, one of the things that we talked about in, in previous meetings was, you know, kind of the idea that not every shopping center is, is created equal, right? And there are certain interregional draws, right? And, and sometimes you've got uses like furniture stores, which tend to cluster because people aren't necessarily looking for an Ethan Allen couch, they're looking for a couch.
Yep.
And if you can attract multiple furniture stores to, in, in a single area, you might actually, everybody would benefit because everybody would be drawing from a regional,
Right.
you know, area to Superior to go, dropping at the three or four different furniture stores. So have you guys thought about that, even if you're looking to do it a little more?
Yes and no. It's, it was on our mind when we did the Stickley deal. But it was on our minds, the opposite is, is we didn't want to become that. We didn't want to become, um, the destination for furniture. Because it doesn't provide a lot of synergy for shopping. Furniture stores are busy Saturday, Sunday, and Tuesday. And although you might, that furniture store might do $10 million in sales, they're only busy Saturday, Sunday, and Tuesday. And what the reason for that, and I used to be in the furniture business, so I know Saturday and Sunday, uh, you know, husband and wife are going out shopping, and they're looking at furniture. And inevitably, Tuesday, one of them comes back to actually make the purchase that they looked at on Saturday or Sunday. That's what happens in the furniture business. And so the, and when they're coming back on Tuesday to make that purchase, they're walking in the door, putting their credit card down, and they're getting back in their car and leaving. So there's not a lot of cross-shopping with, yeah, unless you have a line of furniture stores. And they are all offering something different, but even then, you're still only really gonna find Saturday and Sunday as your busiest days. Yeah, we thought about that with Stickley because we didn't want to become that. Okay. So.
We've got about another 10 minutes.
I just, I just want to add something before I forget. I love that Wayne Smoke Shop is on your website.
Yes.
You know, just as a.
The featured entrepreneur, yes.
Yeah, and it's, um, I was a little surprised to see it because, I mean, I think it's, I mean, the success has been surprising to me, I think it's just been great.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's done great. So it's funny, he actually, unless he's changed his mind, the last time we talked to him, he actually turned down diners, drive-ins, and dives because he didn't feel like he could handle the capacity that they would have brought for extra business. He, at first, he said, well, I'm gonna do it as soon as the expansion's done. And then he told us, he said, no. So unless, I don't know if he changed his mind or not, but, uh, so Superior Marketplace is at a, I'll tell you the occupancy, let me get the right column here. We show it as 84 and a half. But that's based on, it's actually probably a little bit higher than that. That's from a different accounting standpoint, it's probably slightly higher than that.
And that's, is that based off storefronts, is that based off square footage?
It's based off of our, what we call our recovery rate for common area expenses, which, so we'll bill it at 100%. So we're recovering 84 and a half percent. And that's usually right in, pretty in line with the actual occupancy rate.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty close to it.
But I think if we went around and counted potential storefronts in this area, I think the occupancy rate would obviously be much, much lower, right? Because you're taking a storefront of, you know, that goes 20 feet compared to a Costco, Costco's gonna contribute towards your shared expenses.
Yeah.
A thousand X what a small storefront.
Understood. So I've got, I mean, I'll tell you, I've got the 5,200 foot space that was Sears. I've got, uh, 3,500 square feet, which was the niche. I've got another 3,100 feet, and then I have two shop spaces, 1,300 and 1,000 feet. That's what's vacant today. And we're showing, and we are showing the Party City space on our website, but obviously we're not counting that as a vacancy.
So from my perspective, speaking for me, not for the board, I'm grateful you're here.
Yeah.
Can't, I mean, I, I was really looking forward to this meeting.
Yeah.
Sure.
Because I'm not hearing anything more than what we heard last year.
Look, I, I get that.
And when I hear a five-plus-year plan, and you're out there looking at partners, grateful for messaging from the board around potential transition housing, that's, I, I have that appetite today.
Sure.
I don't have that appetite five years from now.
Well, I tell you, the bottom line is, yeah.
I think this is a blighted property, and it shouldn't be on the market.
Well, it, it's not. And I can tell you, the bottom line is, we're, we're not multifamily developers. It's not who we are. And so, uh, from a redevelopment, I think that that's what this project needs, and.
But it needs it today. It doesn't, five years from now, then we should get rid of the property.
But we're not gonna get rid of the property. We'll, we'll find the right multifamily partner. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna find the wrong one, and we're gonna make sure that we do it right.
But what have we been doing for the last year looking for multifamily? We, we talked to you over a year ago.
Understood. And we have been talking to groups. Look, there's not a lot of groups that we want to do business with and we want to be partners with. There's also not a lot of groups lining up behind at the door to say, we want to build multifamily here, right? It's easy to get them to build multifamily in Denver, even Westminster. We've looked at our Westminster project for multifamily. We had, we had a lot of people express interest in that. We can't build that project, the city won't let us.
So here you had a willingness, a willing board to be flexible.
Understood, but I don't have, I don't have a lot of willing partners.
Set of excuses.
I don't have willing partners.
Two years from now, five years from now, around lack of funding.
I'm not gonna build something without the right partner. Simple as that. I'm just not. I'm not gonna build something without the right person behind it.
To my view, I think it's time to let go. I'd like, I'd like to see this property for sale, someone that wants to partner with them.
We are not a seller of this property today.
That's just, it's disappointing to me. You don't feel like you're a partner to the town.
I just, I disagree with that wholeheartedly. I do feel like this is partnership, and I think as a partner, you'd want me to bring in the right person. You wouldn't want a really crappy apartment operator sitting there trying to do something. I don't, I don't think any of this is for that.
Really crappy apartment operator, but I think, you know, we expressed the willingness to listen, and a year later, we're, we're in the exact same place. I'm not gonna pretend like I'm pleased and, you know, thanks for coming and, you know.
Look, I'm in the, I'm in the same place, I'm in the same place two years later with a lot of municipalities where I'm, I'm spending hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars.
We've spent, we've spent tens of thousands of dollars, oh, more than 100,000 dollars trying to look at options.
I.
You know, there's minimal awareness of what's happening in this particular region. In fact, you're not aware of what's happening on the other side of 36. You're, you're not.
I hope, I hope that you're not, I hope that you're not blaming me for you spending tens of thousands of dollars because we never asked for that to happen. We would have spent that money. If anyone had ever asked, we would have spent that money. So I certainly hope.
Disappointing.
I certainly hope that you're not blaming me.
No, I'm not blaming you, but great. It's, if any partnership takes two willing parties, we're a willing party. It's just two years later, it feels like we're just.
We are a willing party also, but this, this, for us, this requires a third party.
Essentially.
Yeah. And we don't know that we have that right third party yet.
Let's get to work.
Let's find it. So, yeah.
So, because we have a little more. So, because you're here and you have an expertise in this industry.
Yeah.
Do you ever find that, uh, operators that come in that, uh, we'll call them luxury operators, uh, that might not, in our, in our, uh, where you aren't high revenue, tax, tax revenue generating operators, say, car dealerships? Do they, on the flip side, actually attract other luxury operators? And are they a net benefit?
I don't, so speaking of car dealers in specific, I don't know the answer to that.
How about luxury car dealers?
Yeah, I, I don't know. We haven't, we haven't done it. We actually talked, I know they're going across the street, but we actually talked to Tesla for a while here. We had that same conversation internally, and we don't know the answer because we haven't done it.
Using your years of experience as a gut check, would you have actually brought in others?
I think, I think there could have been some synergy with somebody like Tesla. Only because what they were doing here, what, what the proposal for, this was for the Sports Authority space, was not just a dealership, but also a service center, it's kind of all in one, which. which historically Tesla hasn't done that, right? They invite at the mall, right? Their service center is wherever it is. So if somebody's here servicing their car, right, and it's something they can wait for, then they're shopping while they're doing that, right? They're probably not just sitting in the dealership waiting. So I think that could have brought some synergy and some cross-shopping and attracted some other tenants, the name, I think, could have brought some other tenants. You know, we just had the group, I don't even know if they're in Denver, Carvana in Denver? You, him and somebody built that big tower that the cars are on, like an elevator, I'm hoping now. They just approached us and wanted to look at our entire portfolio, where they could do those. I don't know that that does anything for us, quite honestly, from a, from a merchandising, forget the economics of the deal, I'm just talking from a merchandising standpoint, which I think is your question.
Yes.
I don't, I don't think that does anything for us. You're going at your, I think the way Carvana works, you order it online, you go in, shows up, you push a button on the elevator, and the car goes up or down and shows up and then pulls out and you're gonna drive off. Nobody's really shopping when they do that. But I, I think if it was a more traditional dealer like a Jaguar or Land Rover, would that allow for cross-shopping within a shopping center? I don't know. My gut says no. I think the way Tesla runs their business, I think that could have, but I don't know, we haven't done any. This would have been our only one.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I, sorry, my gut says yes, but I don't know.
Anyone else? Closing thoughts, questions? I appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, everybody. I appreciate it.
Yes, thanks. All right, we'll...
We got an interview, yes, this will break down.
Yeah, I expect you to be back. And go ahead with our interview.
Thanks, Mayor, we have one interview tonight for the Cultural Arts and Public Spaces Advisory Committee, Rachel Tittles is here. You wanna come up, Rachel, and introduce yourself to the board?
Hi, Rachel, welcome.
Thank you.
If you want to start with a little brief introduction about yourself, then we'll have a few questions from the board.
Sure. My name is Rachel, I am a newer resident to the downtown area, and I've attended the CAPS committee a couple of times just as a member of the community, and I'm hoping that I can join the committee.
Very good, yeah. It's good to see you down at the opening for the Roundabout Art, so thank you for your interest in joining the committee, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Questions from the board?
I'll start. Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Why CAPS?
I think, I have a son, and we explore a lot, so we've explored Boulder, all, all areas. And one thing that we always come back to is the arts, sculptures, the events, it can, you know, interactive performing arts, things like that. So when I saw the arts committee, it really struck my attention. I love the way that it engages stakeholders in the kinds of things that are happening or we're trying to do, so that, that's why it struck my attention.
Great. Yeah.
Appreciate you wanting to get involved.
Thank you.
What in particular, first off, thank you for your commitment to serving in the community and welcome to town. What in particular would you like to see from a public arts perspective in downtown Superior, since that's where you live?
Yeah, I would like to see areas where people can gather. I was at a meeting and someone brought up the idea of like, in a library or more of a community space where there's areas that art could be displayed and exchanged in ways to kind of like engage community members in that way. I love the sculptures, I love the community engagement around getting people's opinions, events, that sort of thing. Does that answer your question?
Welcome to town.
Thank you.
Quick question, do you consider yourself more of a doer or a thinker when it comes to being involved on a committee?
I like that question. I would say that it has to be both. I think that if you do the planning upfront, then a lot of the doing is more efficient. I've done a lot of work with communities and stakeholder groups across Colorado, and so I guess that maybe comes from some of the work that I've done in the research, but I know that if you don't put the, kind of the thought and the structure in place in the beginning, a lot of times you end up doing that towards the end anyway.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I'll go one more. Since we got you here, we have a little bit of extra time. What do you think so far of living in downtown Superior? Pulses, minuses, thoughts off the top of your head?
Yes, we love it. I have met a ton of people, not just in our building, but in the various communities that have been built around there. Part of it is that my son is taking the bus, so we meet a lot of people just walking out and about, people are very interested and engaged and chatty, and I think that's awesome. I think there's gonna be a lot of buy-in, and I think there's a lot of opportunity as things come up, whether it's like surveys, I know that's been discussed, to kind of grab people's attention. I think that areas to gather would be really beneficial, things like a library, community spaces would be awesome. Right now, it's a lot of like the sports stable and that sort of traffic, but I'm really excited and curious to see how it kind of unfolds.
As somebody who's new to town, is there anything that would have made your transition into being a resident here a little bit more easier or enjoyable, or anything in that regard?
I don't know, I think it's, it's a little easier because I'm from here, so a lot of that was pretty smooth.
That's fine, thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes the board's questions. I'll have the final question, which I ask all applicants for all committees and commissions, and that is, do you have any potentials for conflict of interest, such as you have a side business doing event planning or something that might somehow benefit from your membership on, on the committee?
Not that I can think of, no.
Okay, very good. Well, thanks again for your interest, and we will be acting on this at a future meeting.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll adjourn the work session and be back at 7 o'clock for the regular meeting.